We'll reopen the public session. Please stand for saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm turning over the superintendent for the end, the Nisbah recognition. This is executive pens. There's a plastic pad.
Did you want to ask?
Yep, it is my privilege to pass along to Bobby Dermott, one of the board members, Life Kind of Cheaper Award Level Number Two. This comes from the New York State School Board Association. For those who don't know, I'm very involved with our board committees. He also serves on the Vice President now, going next year, go on next term. So he's certainly done a lot for us as districts. There is a little letter here and a certificate. It says Board Excellence Award to Bobby Dermott, and then it gives the year of the election. Okay, they also.
My pen already broke, so.
The box, you have the box because it's just like, I'm gonna hear about that.
Bob, just to let you know that when I got my level two, the executive pens that they gave then were metal pens, not the plastic one that you have on there.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna have the superintendent have the pleasure of introducing our new student ex officios.
Right. So tonight, oh. Ben, you're here.
He was here the whole time.
You hear whenever I just talk?
Yeah, he's been here the whole time.
Okay, at the end, okay. Good to see you, Ben. So really quick for those that don't know, Ben has been our ex officio member of the board for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We honored him at the last meeting. He's done an excellent job. Tonight, he will, for one meeting anyway, do a little mentoring of the people sitting to his, his left and his right. To his left is Jonah Goldman. Jonah Goldman was selected as the next ex officio student representative of the Board of Education for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So welcome, congratulations to him. And then, sitting to his right is Michael Untalas, and Michael is an honorary ex officio representative for our meeting tonight. Michael and I had talked a few times during the school year. He expressed some interest. There's no better mentor for the, for the evening to, to sit with than Ben. He's been one of our best, so later on, when you get a, a chance to give your, your comments, the individual who's next to you can certainly take part and they can follow your lead. Okay?
And Jonah, so you know that we let the student, the outgoing ex officio board member decide what the new one has to do, and he put in their fifteen-minute speech every meeting. So just to.
That's great. I love it.
All right, any residents' comments that were signed up? Okay. All right, I'll call for motions except the consensus agenda as submitted. Anything to discuss? We're separate. If not, then all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Posits are abstaining. Motion carries. Personnel report. I'll call for a motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Moving seconded. There are items to separate. Mr. Stack, what items to separate? Okay, two and four. Anything else to separate and discuss besides two and four? All right, all those then in favor of accepting items one, three, and five through twenty-two, please say aye. Aye. Posits are abstaining. Motion carries. Mr. Stack, I'm gonna turn it over to you for items two and four.
Kelly Stoba, come help, please. It's a familiar face, I believe, to the Romanian board. This is Kelly Stoba, and I'm pleased to ask for the board's recommendation for her tonight to the position of Atosa Critical Instruction and Technology. Kelly's been with us now for a few years and served in a myriad of roles. We're very happy to obtain her services last year in the Atosa format. She's been really integral and responsible for doing some technology integration in our classrooms, working in particular with our teachers at all the grade levels, and we're really excited for her to move into this role where she'll be helping Jen Goliath in the office of Critical Instruction. So we asked for support in her foundation tonight.
All those in favor then of accepting Jen for the position, or Kelly, whoops, sorry, you said Jen Goliath and popped right in my head. Wow. See, I, I was thinking of like grilling her with hazel questions right now. That's, that's the problem, you know. But we'd be here all night. All those in favor then accepting Kelly as our CIT teacher on special assignment, please say aye. Aye. Posits are abstaining. Motion carries. Congratulations.
It's my honor to introduce to the board this evening Kelsey Lepowski. Kelsey has, uh, as an Agrifield graduate. We're really excited for her to hopefully move into the new position that has been created for her. This is an excellent opportunity to replace Ben Schiffer, since he retires in our school district. Kelsey has a very unique knowledge of Tusker culture as well as the language. Niagara field product and has worked with us in a couple of different situations post-COVID. Most notably, she's worked in self-contained classes at our point of view of elementary school. So we asked the board to consider her to replace her language.
Actually, we're really quick. It's okay, let me just, let me just, let me just, do you want to clarify? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so everybody's clear. Mr. Schiffer is retiring this year. Mr. Schiffer's position is actually being filled with Zan. And many of you know, she was the preschool teacher. It's that pre-K position that is vacant that Kelsey will be.
Thank you.
Tell them.
All right, all those then in favor of accepting Kelsey as our pre-K teacher at Tusker Aurora, please say aye. Aye. Posits are abstaining. Motion carries. Welcome to the fucking family. Congratulations.
One more thing to add in regards to Kelsey, she's going to join the class, she's a board member, and Lori, let me get this right. Lori's been at our high school teaching in our social studies department. She's gonna be helping us next year teach some of the Tusker Aurora language and culture historical classes here at our high school. So it's really nice to have her here to support. She said I want to hear from her support. So it's really nice to have Lepowski.
And, and I would add, it's actually some of the classes that Mr. Schiffer taught that Lori will be teaching next year. So that, that, that was the. I'm just helping Mr. Stack. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Capitol Project Committee.
Just a real quick update.
Let's still see a wall.
Thank you, thank you. So the work has begun in the auditorium. They started taking out the seats. We are selling those seats until.
The reservations are over, so Friday they've picked them up.
Got it. Friday they're coming to pick them up, people who did reserve, reserve the seats. Now the real work will begin. It was really, the timing of this actually worked out really well in that none of the significant work happened before exams. That work is going to really start after graduation. They haven't even fenced off parts of the front of the circle, so it really made the end of the school year easier for everybody that was here. You know, we'll obviously have to put out some communication for next school year once we get close, but we're, we're off and running. If you haven't had a chance, if you go into the back, you can see the tennis courts are getting pretty darn close to being done. We expect the top coating, the finishing, to happen the week after next, so two weeks from now. Once they finish that, it needs to set for so long, and then we'll be able to start using those.
Will they play in this fall?
Absolutely, they'll be playing this fall. They'll also, there's also pickleball courts on those for the community who want to participate. And if you remember, one of the benefits of moving those courts was that the former courts, that fence is coming down, that area is gonna be turned into park, additional parking back there, which should really be helpful for a lot of our families.
Audit Committee?
Just the date.
Yeah, which is. Just want to let people know that the next board meeting, which is July tenth, we have an audit committee meeting at five o'clock before the board meeting.
Which, which is, as Allison knows, we're gonna have to discuss a little bit. I have the superintendent comments about that particular meeting.
Okay. Ex officious student members report.
So, um, school's pretty much over by this point. Um, we just wrapped up exams and graduations tomorrow. Do either of you have anything you want to add, anything you want to say, any comments?
So. Um, my name's Michael. I'm towards classes, Mrs. Dixon's class. We do the coffee sale. Thank you so much for having us doing the coffee sale, proving us, why it's still, thanks Tom, why it's doing it. I thought why we can't get class kids for us, Mr. Lee's class and Mrs. Dixon's class? Like, she tried to talk with time staff, and we are not going there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So that's a thing you can plan in next year with the launch.
We, we will talk about it.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Jonah, nothing? Come on.
Want to say hi?
Hello, everybody. My name's Jonah. It's really lovely to be here. I don't have anything prepared, unfortunately.
How did, how did your election go with, with school, everything?
Lots of people seemed excited to have me. I was just good to be able to be that, what's the community, as I try to be active, I try to be as funny as I can, and it's just nice to be able to act on that.
And Jonah, I will say that you came really, you come with high positive evals from the people who, from the teachers who talked about you when they said you were the person, so really nice things, and you're following in great footsteps. We've been really, really fortunate to have some excellent liaisons of the board.
Not so much your sister, though, she didn't. All right, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mr. Stack hiring first, if you could, and stepping.
As the board can see, it's been pretty busy, very personal report there. Always is at the end of each year. Just by the Board of Education, it's June twenty-ninth, there will be a run in the Sentinel for some of the positions that we're looking to fill. Always looking certainly for replacement substitute teachers as well as substitutes, SRP positions of all varieties, so food service offers, plus attendance teacher rates, so on and so forth. That will also be linked directly to our website, which also will link out to social media, so be looking for that. That will happen at the beginning of next week. So the board presses on, so to speak, to hire those individuals to anticipate a real positive twenty-four, twenty-five school year start, and it's in person.
Thank you.
I might even touch you. That's him. He just cut you off.
We're good. The, um, this time of year, of course, has been, is really exciting, right? We have graduation tomorrow, but the last two weeks have been, been really exciting as well. There's been so many end-of-year ceremonies, events, field days, and believe it or not, this was the first year that I ever actually had a chance to stop and witness the cap-and-gown walkthroughs at the elementary schools. Were we able to see it at West Street? Something I haven't had a chance to stop and see, and it was a really, really cool thing. For those that don't know, our seniors put on their caps and gowns, we bus them to the elementary schools that they attended when they were young, and the, the little kids are so excited to see them. The little ones don't know why, but they're really excited. They're slapping everybody five, but the, the seniors getting to take a look back at the place, you know, that they used to, that they used to walk in the same hallways and walking by their teachers and teachers who recognize faces, you know, getting all teary-eyed. It's, um, it's, it's a pretty awesome experience, and we started that number of years ago, and it's been a really, really good thing. So that was a, a really neat thing for me to be able to experience. On this past weekend, we had the car parade and, but also the nineteen-seventy-four class reunion building tour. We really started doing those in a, a number of years ago now, and the, the classes love it. It's a really great experience for them. They walk through and, you know, they're remembering which teachers were in what hallways, and the class of nineteen-seventy-four, really their, their building was contained to like A, B, C, and D. Really, that was pretty much their, you know, in the auditorium, that was their, their world at that time, so there's been a lot of expansion, and especially for those who live out of town, and they come back, and they haven't been here, and they get to see the, the, the rest of the school, they get to see some of the other facilities. It's a, it's a really neat experience for all of them. And, um, I mentioned graduation. Graduation is tomorrow night at seven PM. Doors open at five, five-thirty, five-thirty? Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna interject something with that. Tradition in the past, we parked at the credit union, and we, you know, had rides back there. Are we gonna do the same thing?
Absolutely. All you have to do is extra call me, and we'll make sure you get a ride back, and we'll cut down on some of the traffic that has to be in those parking lots.
What time you want, what time we want to meet here? Probably around between five-thirty and six?
Whenever you get here, start texting. The card only fits one at a time or two at a time anyway, right?
And Jonah, I think if you want to join us with, as, with the board down there, and, you know, I'm all for that, if you want to come to graduation tomorrow night, you can shake these, you know, graduates' hands and everything as they come through the, the line with us, and, okay?
And the, the last thing I have is just an update on the Greenway project. We are working with Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper, I think I've mentioned this before. They are putting in for funding through the Greenway Ecological Standing Committee. We are looking to utilize some of our Greenway host community monies to get this project done along Cave Creek. So I'll continue to report out as we have more information. I know that that application to the Ecological Standing Committee is due, I think at the end of this month. It's coming real soon. So we gave them all the information that they need, and we'll cross our fingers that a, a good portion of the funding for this is gonna come from, from that group. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh.
You don't have it listed on your thing. I mean, I don't know.
It wasn't too important. Okay, as of right now, the reorganization meeting is scheduled for July tenth. However, it looks like we might not even have a forum for that meeting. That meeting, of course, the board does a lot of things, including the selecting officers and all that, so my recommendation is you can certainly talk, but would be, we'd move it to the, to the Tuesday or Thursday, so that would be the ninth to the eleventh. But I'll listen, but it's something, if, by the way, after we make that move, if we make that move, we then have to talk about the audit committee meeting as well.
That's your guys' discussion, so.
I'm open to Tuesday or Thursday myself.
I can't do Tuesday. I cannot do Tuesday.
Not Tuesday?
But if everybody else can, I'm not here that's fine.
I, I work for Thursday, the eleventh.
Thursday? Everybody can do Thursday, everybody else can do Thursday. Thursday, Thursday, the eleventh is? I'll talk to you afterward. I'll talk, Thursday, the eleventh. Can you, um, I'm just thinking right now. If we're, you're, we're gonna have to have a motion, right? Didn't you act on that date? Because usually you act on the calendar.
That would have been last board meeting.
You've acted, because we acted on the reorg meeting already, so we're gonna have to, you're just, under new business, you'll have to act on that, just so everybody knows, okay? Because for, for everybody that doesn't know, then at the reorg meeting, we set the schedule for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that was acted last meeting as, as an action item in consensus agenda.
So, so we'll, we'll want to do that, and then maybe if we can just talk quick about that, the, um, the meeting for the audit, audit committee, that's at five o'clock right now. It's scheduled on Wednesday.
You can't have it before? Because the audit committee's not set for what members are gonna be serving on until after the reorg meeting?
What, what are they reporting on?
It's the external, it's coming to give their opening, you know, what they're gonna be working on. There's nothing to make decisions on, it's basically them describing what they are.
Why couldn't they just, why couldn't they just do that to the entire board then, that, and have them come during the board meeting?
I'm not sure they can make it, because they have several school districts they need for, so we had to hook it like over and what the headline.
If they can't move it, I don't know, is five o'clock bad for people to, it usually doesn't take very long. It usually takes a half hour, forty-five minutes. Would, would, does that work for the people who are on the audit committee currently, if we still held the Wednesday at five? I know it's two nights in a row, and I don't like doing that, but.
Wednesday to ten?
Yeah.
At five?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have to try and make that, yeah.
Okay, if they. And.
No, it's Jason.
You, you could do that? Okay. 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 Should, um, yeah, and I'll send something after the meeting to Jason. Okay?
Okay, anything else on that item?
That's it. Thank you.
Any reports to the board? Items for board discussion? Old business? New business? Any comments from public? It's open mic night, so.
Two, two things.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Now we have to do the. Oh, yeah, swearing to the district clerk. Okay. Let's do the swearing in the clerk, district clerk first. I'll, hold on one second.
Just give us one minute. Sorry.
We got two things on there.
There's actually two pieces of business.
It's, it's not listed on here. He's slack. He, he didn't put his note on there. Renee, want to come over here for a second? Do I raise your right hand? Just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of district clerk.
Of district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Sign that, please. Congratulations. Yeah, go back to mine. All right. And then I have to call for a motion to set the district reorganization meeting and the first business meeting to be Thursday, July eleventh at six, six o'clock for reorg, seven o'clock for business. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Posits are abstaining. All right, you're set with reorg. Mr. Peters?
Hello, everyone. A lot of faces here. I just wanted to like to thank everybody on this board, being a past board member. I know the time we dedicate to them. But especially Steve, I just wanted to come up and be at this meeting for you. Thank you for the thirteen years, I believe.
Yeah, it is.
Thirteen years of services, and you should be commended. You did a great job, and and you're gonna miss that salary that you collect.
He just had a three, three thousand percent raise, too. It was just.
I think you're gonna miss that salary. I've been offered chicken wings out of my pocket last year.
Good evening, Dave Brier. Steve, I want to thank you for your service for thirteen years. All board members, thanks for your service. It's very rewarding, but very stressful, right? The kids come first, that's a fun, nice responsibility to the task force, but Steve, I'm happy for you and sad for the district. I'm happy because you're gonna get time back. It's very stressful, the amount of calls you took and on your own personal time, right? It takes a lot of time with your family, so thank you so much for your service. A quick story about Steve. When we ran for this school board, there was a lot of reasons we ran, and then unfortunately, Chris, myself, and Chris Lee won, and then we looked at each other, okay, what are we gonna do next? And Steve and another gentleman, I forgot his name, Todd, and the gentleman came and said, he didn't have the time to commit, so Steve, he actually won the, the last spot. And the great thing about Steve is he had a minor in education law, and we're going, oh, this is great. So every time we, the lawyers dropped his book on us, not really, so every time there was some kind of conflict, Steve would call us and say, hey, listen, read this part of the book. We're discussing this tonight. So because he saved us and he got us up to speed, he never paid for it then, so Steve, you got your back. Thank you, guys.
Can I just, one, one question?
Sure, go ahead.
I, I just want the gentleman who spoke tonight to know that at the last meeting, we did honor Steve with like, you know, all the things that he's been part of and the things that he's done, so you're.
Do you know any of these gentlemen?
I do know both of them.
You sure?
I do.
Okay.
Did you buy him dinner?
I was supposed to go to his niece's, nephew's graduation, and he took my invitation on the mailbox, so.
That would, if, if they'd sent him one, that would have been true.
So one of, one of the, going with the story of the phone calls, and we won't say who called, but Mr. Peters and I had a four o'clock wake-up call from someone about snowplowing. It's one of our many phone calls that we've gotten by, in the past by people. And with Mr. Brier, the best was the, you were about to go over the table at another board member, and I sort of stepped between the two of you. Adam beating. Yeah, yeah, it was.
It was a tough time.
It was. It was, meetings are not as contentious as they were when they first started. There's still one floating around on YouTube from back then. But, uh, why, take up your offer. We do have a second session after next meeting. It shouldn't go long. Yeah, so you want to, you know, give a booth over there? I'll be over there. So, um, any other?
Steve, I want to thank you for, I, I, I'm not sure, but I think you're the longest standing board member, thirteen years, and you know, thank Dave and Chris for coming, and those were some rough times, that first five years. He may have come after me. I don't remember who came after, but, you know, we always had the right intentions. We were all young, new to a board. You know, you're mature. I know I've matured a lot, and the first five years were really rough. But the last separate, me and you grown into each other, and we've never had, you know, we've really learned to adapt and work with each other really, really good, but I know the time it takes, and especially in that position, and I want to thank you for all the thirteen years. It's, it's gonna be hard to replace that.
Thank you.
I unfortunately wasn't, I unfortunately wasn't here in the last meeting, so I didn't get to say my thanks to you. It's been eight years with, working with you, and I wouldn't have wanted anybody else sitting in that seat other than you. You've done a fine job leading our, our group, and we've accomplished many things over these last eight years that I've been here. And with that said, I wish you the best. I hope we see you again, and, um, with that, also I have one other thing. We do have a new superintendent for the BOCs. Her name is Dr. Pan Farer. She was, uh, she'll be starting on August fourteenth, and I'm looking forward to nice things happening there, too, as well. So, like, congratulations, Steve. I mean, I, you couldn't have done, you couldn't have done what we did without you, so appreciate your service.
One, one funny story I have to share before we, we. One, one funny story I have to share before we, we, we wrap it up, that these, these guys know because it was during the building tour that this happened. We were, we were going through the tour of the, the district and everything, and one of the, the administrators at the time was asking who we possibly were gonna put in as superintendent, because everyone knew what was, what was going on and everything, and just out of the cuff, we had no idea at that time of what our, our plan, we, we didn't discuss it. So, um, as we're, you know, I said, Farren is gonna be the superintendent. And he got called into a meeting, and after he left the meeting, the other principals were asking him, uh, what was the meeting about? He says, I'm gonna be superintendent. So you could just imagine Farren's smile and his face and everything like that. Um, and so to this day, we, I, he always jokes around with me when I see him, he says, so when am I gonna be made superintendent? So Dan, just to let you know, he might be coming after your job there, you know?
Well, I gotta tell you, just a minute ago, when Bob paused after saying a new superintendent, and then said BOCs, it was a little bit and I don't think anybody else noticed, or I'm just maybe sensitive to it, there was a little, yeah, it wasn't long, but it was it's like, you might want to finish that sentence, so.
One last thing, Maureen, I want to thank you for everything you've done as our board clerk for all these years. It's been a pleasure, uh, having to, um, you know, sign your novels that you bring over to me, and, um, you've done fantastic work for everything with us. I mean, you know, I mean, Robin was before you, and you can't, stepped right in and got things rolling, picked everything up right away, and you, you keep us organized and, and, and going, and, I mean, even you've caught things where I've missed, uh, you know, uh, with board, um, with board policy, so thank you. Thank you so much for everything you've given to the board and to the district and, and all these years, and I know you're gonna enjoy babysitting, right?
Yeah.
A great job.
Yeah.
Maureen, I apologize. I, I want to also thank you. I forgot, she's the last one, but, uh, thank you for everything you have done.
And Maureen's got a little bit more time in her position in the district. We're not letting her go that quick, but her, her, her last official meeting is tonight as the district clerk, for those that
Thank you for everything.
That being said, um, I'm gonna call for a motion to reenter executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of particular persons in current litigation.